Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
I don't have it.
Minutes from the prior meeting.
I'll accept that as sweet.
I'll second that. I'll look in favor. Public comments, no longer than three minutes if we can hold it down to that.
I would like to thank personally all the people that have been helping me this last month with everything everyone's done. Helping me with the food, the planting of the garden, helping with the other stuff, and even offers to cut my field. And all of the cards and the calls, I really appreciate them. I learned this town has a lot of really nice people living here that have been really nice to me. And if you don't know what I'm talking about, then you're not one of the nice people I was thanking. Thank you for allowing me to talk.
Dennis?
After the March meeting this past, this year, I was pretty well fed up and disgusted with what's going on in this town as far as its spending. I've been saying for years, verify or justify the need for two full-time employees. Today, I had another example of why. That just reinforces my thought. I was going up Valley Cemetery Road at about 10 after 11 this morning. Tom and Matt are in the town truck spreading calcium chloride. Why is that a two-person job? To me, it seems like we only need one. Our road budget this year is over $408,000. Seventeen miles of road. Brookline, sixteen miles of road, $195,000. We're $213,000 above them. We got two people riding in the truck, spreading calcium chloride. And it's not the first time, and I'm sure it won't be the last time, until the Select Board takes action and puts a stop to this. Now, we got a chain of command in this from the Highway Department up. It only has one link, and that's Tom. He's the foreman, he's the road commissioner, and he's on the Select Board. And he's allowing this to happen. And David, I hold you primarily responsible being Chair. And I want you to call on the Budget Committee instead of planning how much money we're going to spend and then plotting how much money we spent throughout the year. Come up with ways to reduce the spending at this time. And I'd like to have an answer from the Select Board as to what's going to be done. Alright what? What does alright mean?
I said okay.
Are you going to give me an explanation?
One thing with the Floyd, you want to spend a lot of money and put a high dollar electric valve on there so somebody can open it and go down the road without dumping a hundred a gallon, walking from the front to the back. Most of the time, Matthew rides on the back with it and runs the valve. Today, we were on our last trip soon, and there was very little in the tank, and we were draining it out. Is that why they're doing that job?
I would say I'd buy that.
And it's been like that when you was on the board. We've done the same thing before. So unless you want to spend money and fix that tank so you can run it.
Over the years, I've seen you and Matt down at Ocean State, job lot, 8:30 in the morning, pricing tarps. You guys said, both of yous, go down and turn in the Bridge Road surveys down to Dummerston. Two of yous in the truck. Took a total of five hours. You guys, I seen where the warrants showed you and Tom, Matt, down at Napa, twice in one week to pick up light bulbs for the truck. I mean, it's not like one time. It was one time. I used to see you over at the Cambridgeport Store leaning on the truck, the two of yous filling up your gas cans. It's always two guys doing a job that it seems like one person could do. And instead of delivering paperwork to Dummerston, 50 cent stamp is a lot less than five hours of town time at $60 an hour. And there's no accountability.
We've gone over the three minutes.
David, I think this is important. And if it isn't important to anybody else, it's important to me. And I don't get any answers, and the town doesn't get any answers. I mean, you sit there and you brush everybody off. You brush me off mostly. And we don't get answers in the, like I said, the spin.
This is for public comments. So you are able to comment if you want.
And I am. But again, we're giving these two individuals 15% raise this year. We're going to give them 15% raise next year. That's 30%. And when I questioned it, it was, oh, we're just bringing them in line with neighboring towns. That may be true, but we didn't compare the insurance and everything else. We didn't compare the whole benefits package. We just want to bring these up to wages. But what about Blue Cross Blue Shield Platinum we offer? That wasn't considered, and it's all part of the cost.
It was considered, Dennis, but so, alright, we're moving on.
David, I don't know if I should fill this up now or not, but I've had a couple of people that want to have a DCI meeting.
Okay.
So we set a date for that.
We'll bring that up the next one for board officials.
Okay.
Alright, we'll move on to town boards and officials.
As you may or may not know, there have been some issues with the HS-122s and our recently sent out tax bills. So I posted a phone number and an email on the board outside where people can call or email the state if they believe they are a part of the problem. Because there's something like 14,000 people in the state that are having a problem with the HS-122s.
Now, is it that they just didn't get the figure in, or what's the problem?
It's, there's some, something with the state. They messed up. They're saying that they're supposed to have it all cleared up by July 27th, according to their email.
So did they mess up on their figures? Did they mess up?
They messed up on the fact that every year on a Monday, we do a download, and it flags people who have filed home steps. It didn't work. It sort of worked. So there are people who have been flagged correctly, but there are people who should have been flagged that were not flagged. And so we sent out tax bills, and some of them did not have the rebate on them. And that's part of the problem is...
So if you're expecting a rebate and it's not on there, that's probably you're one of the probable ones. If you're expecting a rebate and it's on there, you're all set, you don't have to do anything.
Yeah.
You should be fine.
Does that mean a rebate that comes to the town?
Yeah, your property tax rebate.
And it should be listed on your tax?
Yeah, it should be listed on your tax bill if you were to do one. And we also have an issue with a property in town where she received a tax bill, but she actually doesn't have a property in town.
How about that?
There was a change in the boundary between Rockingham, Athens, and Westminster. It never went to our tax map. So our tax map shows this woman having property in town, but yet she does not.
Is that easily corrected, or is that going to?
Well, I have to talk to Devo because he's the one, he did the survey, he did our tax maps, but he didn't transfer that information. According to, and part of it is Wyndham Hill, Windmill, whatever. They had surveys done. Yeah, I can't, you know, and they said, well, survey was lodged, you know, the paperwork was lodged, but yet I'm not finding any copies of this change. So I have, I have some paper copies of the survey that Andy Topher sent to me. So it's, it's going to be a slight loss in revenue, but you know, nothing that we really need to worry about. I just want you to be informed that it's...
It's worth it. I mean, the rebate shows on the tax bill, but the state also sends you a letter explaining the rebate to you, so you should have gotten a letter from the state.
We didn't. I didn't get my letter until after the taxes went out.
Well, I'm just saying.
I know, we should get a letter, but I didn't get mine.
They should, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it happened.
They're all messed up.
They're, they're all messed up.
If you have a letter and it's not on your tax bill, you should contact the...
Yeah, and if you think you were do, like if you got a rebate last year and your situation has not changed this year, you should contact the state. Because there, there is a large snafu up at the state level. It doesn't have anything to do with the towns. It has to do with the state.
But if, if you got a letter and the figure on the letter is the same that's taken off the tax bill, that is correct?
That, that should be right.
That's what it is, okay. But if you have not gotten a letter and you think you have one, need one, call. Or if you have a letter and it's not on the tax bill, call.
Yep, call or email. That's the easiest way to get ahold of them.
Okay.
Yes. The Brookhouse Meeting House. We had our first annual open house, bake sale, plant sale, Saturday. We had a good turnout. We got donations of $335. It was real good. We had a lot of people from out of town and some way in town. Number one comment was, glad to see it open, we like to see it. We've never been able to come in because it's always closed. And on that note, we're, this Wednesday, the 26th, we're having a free concert featuring Peter Miles. A Thai food cart will be there at 5:00. Will be there for people to come and tour the building. And the concert is 6:30 to 8:30. And we're going to have a bake sale, and all proceeds from the bake sale will go towards the Meeting House. And then we have a Harvest Cookout planned for September 22nd from 3, from 2 until we're done. And food will be available at 3 o'clock, but at 2 o'clock, it'll be an open house bake sale type thing. And we wish everyone to come and tour the building. It was my first time in there Saturday. I've never been in there. So that takes care of all their plans for this year of fundraisers.
I just have a quick question with a fan going, did you say the 22nd or the 27th?
The 26th of June.
No, no, in September, I'm sorry.
Oh, 22nd.
22nd, okay.
We are, Sherry and Pam met with Jessa on, can't remember the day, this week, to look at the rafters, the roofs and everything. And he gave her a ballpark of $33,000. But said that he would come back with somebody in the office or whatever and go through it step by step. We talked about the excavator for back of the building where they wanted to do the drainage or whatever. I got a price from Pinnacle View for just the excavator. It would be about $500, but $320 a day. And $160 for delivery and pickup, plus you have to put in the deal. So it's about $500 per day, plus tax. That's counting tax. We haven't sent out any other information, you know, to anybody else about the excavator.
So that's for renting the equipment, and who were you planning on?
Well, that, that's just if we, you know, somebody was willing to do it and knows what they were doing too.
Okay.
I mean, you can't throw this to anybody and...
Why not?
You can't.
What, what do you think about that, Tom? Did they rent one or should?
I think they ought to get places and then put it there, if they're law, and get that one.
But what about an operator for the excavator?
I'll run it.
They'll run it?
I'll run it, they're ready.
Okay.
They'll get through the town, so I should do it.
So if you think that's a little high, maybe you can recommend someone else who might be able to rent one from? I don't know, but...
There was several people mentioned at the meeting, but we haven't...
Gotten to that yet.
Got to that. I was in charge of binding up at Pinnacle View how much it would be and everything. I got that already, so that's where I passed it on. Let's see. And I believe that's all.
Have you guys ever thought of getting a second estimate on doing the rafters and stuff? Another opinion?
We have talked about, well, it's got to go out to bid anyways, or estimates for that kind of money. That is a little high. Yeah, that would definitely put it, put up, you know, and request estimates from other people. Because I know at one time, the engineer that came said something, we could just, you know, temporarily, you know, fix the rafters if we didn't have the money, which we won't have anything. So that might be an option, but I'd like to see how much that would cost compared to...
I want to have him fix it.
But, you know, if you put it out to bid and you get bids in and you don't have the money and then you put the job on hold until you get the money, then those bids might not be valid. So you probably should, yes, you want to figure out about how much it's going to cost, oh, you know how much money you need, but if it's going to be not until the following year, you're going to have to have it rebid anyway.
Well, our, probably our only option will probably be getting it temporarily stabilized and so it doesn't get any worse.
Have you looked into any grants that are available for that?
We have been looking into grants. I don't think we've pursued, I know I haven't pursued that. I've been looking at, out there, but I haven't contacted anyone.
I mean, I understand it's a historic site, but it's costing the town a lot of money.
And it is.
There's going to come a point to...
They're into a refinery camp operation.
I understand that. I understand that, but...
And it's a nice building, you know, I love it. It is, anytime you get into more building, it gets expensive.
And are you planning on, I know you have a couple of events scheduled, but are you planning on like maybe a certain day of the week being open to the public? So because you said people are commenting that it's never open. Are you going to post something that says, open every Saturday from, you know, 11 to 1 or something so that?
I don't see it every Saturday thing, but I was thinking...
Maybe once a month or whatever.
Next year, we were planning on probably once a month when more weather comes, at least being open, you know, getting the word out that we're there, you know, probably having our plant sale a little earlier in the year and, you know, doing it at least once a month to have it open so people can come and look at it and see what we're trying to do. But for this year, we plan...
Just the events?
Just the events, you know, and for right now, we're almost thinking possibly another one in October, but that depends on weather and conditions too. Like an apple cider, hot apple cider tour or something.
Piglets, we need to do a piglet tour. Old-fashioned piglets.
Well, we've got, we're planning on that Harvest Fest. I think we're going to have a pretty good food array.
So actually, you guys are going to need that packing lot up here on the 26th because they're already going to start putting the stone in it because they're coming to do the under rain on the 30th. But if you need it on the 26th. I'll have to stop playing everything down in town, we had to chuck it up there.
With the rain we had at the beginning of the week and the rain that's coming, will that be too wet in the park?
No. Not on the side of the road there. Matt and I cut all the trees and put the packing lot there.
The lawn may be too wet.
Oh, lawn can be a little soggy if we get a weaker rain.
Oh, but we do need it.
We do need it. But I will pack everything and I will have it all delivered to town, guys, and then do that chucking up if we need it. So what did you add to fill on, fill on packing lot in four?
We could drive on.
Yeah. If it does get to the point you want to open it once a month, you know, maybe if you can offer like an area speaker to talk about something different every month, it might attract more people. Because you come in, you see the building two, three times and, well, have a different speaker on a different topic, come in once a month, and maybe it'll attract people more.
There's at least one copy of the quarter two budget report in your inbox there. There's nothing that really jumps out at me as like overspending. There's one thing that jumps out as a mistake in the system that Natalie and I can try to fix. I think the Highway Department Social Security is getting logged under the like Office Employee Social Security, so I'll try to look into that next time we're doing stuff on the computer.
But that's, that's just in here. It's still paying us.
It's not that we're, it's not that we're at 321% of our social security payments even though we're at like 30% of our salaries. Yeah, this is something wonky in the system.
So it's not budgeting problems, just clerical error?
No, because we look at the Highway Department Social Security, they're way under, so I'm guessing that, that somehow the computer's set up to put it in the wrong spot when it does automatic calculations on payroll. So, yeah. You see, the highway is at 10% of their social security for the year, so that's, it's just got to move over. Yeah, so you can look through that. The Budget Committee is still revising the policies for the funds. We did, we made some good progress on it, and Mike actually found some templates from a university, like University of Wisconsin, that were all about how to rate policies. So we're going to look at those, I think, and try to kind of organize the policies that way. So hopefully we'll get them to you in the next couple of months.
I have to say, sorry, I did miss that meeting. I had my Mondays mixed up, but I did look over everything. And from what I see, that we have emailed today. They're very clear and concise and...
So the other thing we talked about, I wasn't going to mention it because you hadn't had a chance to weigh in Denise, but that amongst the Budget Committee, we were thinking of not pursuing changing the fiscal year, at least in the short term now. That we've done a bunch of research and found out that we can't, it would be a pain for the Superintendent's Office if they got our school tax payments at a different time. And so we probably wouldn't be able to change the timing of tax payments. But it seems like without that, it might not be worth the hassle of changing the fiscal year.
I mean, if we still have a tax payment in September, we could still have fiscal year starting in July 1st.
We could. I think, then maybe we could discuss that more as a committee and come when we meet with the Select Board for budgeting time, talk a bit more about it, but...
Alright, anything else? Don?
Fellows Falls Union High School, we're, the board met last time on June 25th. We're looking at a $40,000 surplus. That figure has held for a couple of months now, so it's about, about one half of 1% surplus. The teams have had another good year. The Enviro, Environathon. Fellows Falls won the state championship again. And as of the meeting in the end of June, they're heading on to the North American Competition in Idaho. Sixth grade, oh, the sixth straight year, boys track has gotten the state championship in the third straight year. The girls track has gotten the state championship. I'd almost compare Fellows Falls to the New England Patriots, except the Patriots lost their last Super Bowl, so... Cemetery, we met the first Wednesday in June. Chris Potter, Fennessy, offered at cost a granite, a vertical granite stone marker that would point out where the entrance is to the West Cemetery and the cost.
Didn't he offer to donate that?
Yeah, at his cost, which is mostly the carving. It'd be less than $300. But yes, yeah, thanks for correcting me on that. We're snagged on that, we've had $11,000 that we moved out of CDs and LPL Financial is supposed to invest that for us in a, in mutual funds. We're caught on a paperwork glitch. They were looking for Athens' copy of Federal Form 990, which basically looks like a nonprofit's version of, you know, income tax return. Well, we don't file a 990, so then he asked us to send them a copy of the town's Articles of Incorporation, and we don't appear to have that.
The only thing I can think of is to give them a copy of our charter.
Do we have that in print?
Yeah, oh, we can make a copy, yeah.
Oh, resistant template, couldn't seem to come up with a copy.
I gave you the copy.
I thought you said you had something, and that was in a book somewhere.
Books.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I'm not sure, because I, I printed out the email exchanges I had with Patrick Kelly and left it in the car, but I don't know if the charter thing would work or not. He's, we've both been out of town for almost three weeks, so we're both, he's trying to get some help in getting this thing straightened out.
I'm thinking, you know, the charter is when the town was, you know, established.
Yeah, the town's never been incorporated. The town is established, therefore we don't have any Articles of Incorporation.
On today's email, he's, he said, I wish I had a statement here, something to do about how the town pays its taxes. Well, he said, he's given our federal ID number, so I don't know what else.
Town doesn't pay taxes.
Well, I know, I said, I don't know what else he could have meant by that other than employer ID number. But some kind of, we're still, we're still working on it, unfortunately. The market was about $24,000.
Taxes that we pay for the employees or other, you know, because we really don't pay taxes.
No, I mean, we wouldn't unless we sold something.
We wouldn't pay taxes on the year.
So, so we're stuck, and that, that $11,000 hasn't, the portfolio hasn't been opened up yet.
Can I just go back, the $40,000 surplus from the school, are they planning on using that to decrease next year's budget? Or are they using, going to reimburse that to the member towns? What do you know?
That decision hasn't been made yet. If I had to guess, I'd say we'd probably roll it into reserve funds, you know, pending approval from the taxpayers. That's part of what we vote on in March. And then there's the grant application, USDA Rural Development Equipment Grant for the town office. I was, I was starting to have some exchanges with Andrea Ansel and Adams at the Rattleboro Office before I had got drawn out of town. For one thing, our grant application, this is, we're, it looks like we're applying for next year, we kind of, kind of a year's delay. And I told her, well, you know, we lost our opportunity to start construction this year anyway, but they, they seem to be... But they, they seem to be snagged on the, the vault being considered equipment. They don't, they don't know if it's going to pass muster as equipment.
What do they think it, is it a construction?
Apparently, and if, you know, if we're going to, if the construction loan is doable, I'd go for the whole project. But, but they were, you know, I was, I was told over a year ago that, you know, the, the construction grant application is, is kind of cumbersome, which I believe because I, because I took a pass at it before. They said equipment grant would be much, much more streamlined of a process. Now I'm finding out recently that the fault might not be considered as equipment. So that leaves us with a heating system and whatever else equipment is, you know, vacuum cleaners and anything.
No. Maybe like you can look into IRS publications, because like when you do depreciation on equipment, you can look up in one of the publications and see if that's considered a piece of equipment. And if it is, you can say to them, this is, according to the IRS, this is a piece of equipment, you know?
Yeah, sure, why not, yeah.
That might be something that might help you get through that. I don't know if that's in there or not. I mean, we have to just look up on, on the IRS website, you know, business deduction website, business deduction, depreciation or something. And maybe they'll, because they always give you a list of different equipment, you know, computers, office equipment, or tools for if you're a carpenter, maybe you can look, maybe it is considered equipment. And if it is, you can go to them and say, hey, according to the IRS, this is equipment.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it involves.
You never know.
Or maybe I've got some other ideas that we could apply for.
Anything else?
Uh, no, that's it.
All right. We'll move on to roads. We got two bits.
Oh, the BCA needed.
Oh, yeah, all right. What's it for?
Two people want to, you know, discuss their property and whether they can get a discount on taxes or whatever.
We got, we got, that's what I want.
Grievance, or is that for the BCA?
Well, yeah, they, did they go to grievance? Then I don't think that the Board of Civil Authority can, can change it.
So if you don't have your tax bill yet and the grievance is, is months before you get your tax bill, do you just do go on last year's tax bill about how much your property is worth if you want to grieve your tax bill? I mean, how, how would you go about that?
Well, you would, the, the grant list would have your tax, how much it is. And then after, once the grant list is complete, then it, then you have grievance day, right?
Did you understand the question that I was asking? We said that because they didn't grieve their tax bill, their prob- their grant list, they can't go to Board of Abatement? The Board of Civil Authority, so...
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, because we have a set grievance when we send out all the letters, but the grievance is posted. And that is supposed to be the time that you come in and address your issues with what you think your property value is.
Right, but you don't, you don't send out letters every year prior to their tax bill coming in saying, this is what your property is going to be?
If it's changed.
Only if it's changed, only if it's changed.
And have these people's properties been changed, the price been, the listing price changed, or is it this, no?
And I think, I don't know if there's so much, I guess it's sort of hand in hand there. They're grieving the amount of taxes, but they're also grieving.
Is this an issue where the listers could go, could go back and grieve their property?
Yeah, but you can't make a change on it for this year.
No, no, I don't mean that. I mean for next year.
No, I could do it for next year.
Yeah, so I meant for next year.
But for this year, no.
I mean, you could look at it this year, but you can't change it.
Well, we could, we could make a correction in the grant list. But, I mean, at this point, you know, I, I, one of them I talked to and he said, well, I didn't get my change of appraisal letter noticed. And it's like, I know we sent you one, it didn't get returned to us.
I thought they were all, yeah, don't get a postcard back like mine did. It was just a letter.
No.
Oh, so I was special.
I have, I'm not going there, Dolly, okay? We have a certificate of mailing that we do, which proves we sent out a change of appraisal notice. And if the letter is not returned to us, then the assumption is the owner got the letter.
So, yeah, I don't think we can hold a Board of Civil Authority meeting for them to grieve their taxes unless they go to grievance. And then they have to file an appeal of what every lister decides within a certain timeframe, so... Does anybody else disagree with that?
No, I think it should be grieved. I thought she was going to say it needed to be, taxes were needed to be evaded, and that's what that was going to be about. But if someone's grieving their tax bill, that's a different...
No, because I, I think they're grieving the, the property value. The tax bill's a separate issue. If they were grieving the tax bill, then they would have those six options that they would have to meet, like death, financial hardship.
And that could be done at any time, not just at a grievance meeting?
Yeah, that could be done at any time, if they're grieving their taxes themselves and their inability to pay.
That's Board of Abatement.
Yeah, and their inability to pay.
Okay.
So do you want to go through sending a letter saying that we're not going to hold a meeting and give them the reasons?
You could send them a letter and just say that, that to hold a Board of Civil Authority meeting on their assessment, they have to have grieved it and then follow the procedure. And you might be able to even give them the statute numbers as to where the... You probably have that, Dolly, the statute numbers.
Yes, we've been together since.
All right. We'll go on to roads. Did we get two bits?
Just two bits.
Sam bits? Eastman Sand and Gravel, a bid of thirteen dollars and twenty-five cents a yard, delivered to the Athens Town Garage. Can you tell me what this is for?
Would you sand?
Winter sand.
Would you sand?
This is Ososimo's Industry. Winter sand at eight dollars and twenty-five cents a cubic yard FOB. And a thousand plus yards at eighteen twenty-five delivered.
I'm going to make a motion. Tom, do you want to look at this one before you?
How much do we pay last year?
I don't know, sorry, I think thirteen dollars.
Yeah, it was around thirteen, right? So I'm going to make a motion that we go with Eastman's Sand and Gravel for our winter sand. For eighteen, nineteen, sweet, um, year winter. At, is it thirteen twenty-five?
Thirteen twenty-five, yeah.
At thirteen twenty-five, yeah.
I will second that. All those in favor?
Roads, the paperwork for the block top and it's still set in law three. We've got the undergrating up by Cemetery Road. We've got the three hole that's in that we've got to put in. On the thirtieth, they're supposed to come and do the underground top of Mill Hill. And everything else is...
So you're just waiting for that?
Waiting for them to there for it. But we're going to get, we're going to have all, our end will be ready to go, because...
Is there going to be a point in the year where it's too late to do it?
No, they're still telling me down in Dumeston that it's a goal, so I don't know.
Did it get lost somewhere up there?
No, the windmill is a bit, and they're checking to make sure and not move it towards the, uh, into a habitat for annuals.
Wetlands or whatever, okay.
Last night I knew they called up and told them that we already stayed exactly where it is, we're not moving nothing. But I talked with them, that was, I think it was Tuesday. Just to get everything ready, all right?
Have they come down and looked at everything, or?
They've been down and looked at everything. So all we got to do is wait and then put the underground in the top of Mill Hill.
Do we want to make a motion, do we want to make a motion tonight as soon as we get that information in from the state that we outstart advertising it to put out the bid?
To put out the bid, so we don't, yes.
I would, because the state said the date out, but put it out the bid.
Then I'll make the motion that as soon as we hear from Mount Pili, that we let you put that out to bid without holding any things.
Yeah, let Tom get to start the process of putting it out.
It's a lot of rainstorm, we had a washout on Haran Hill. Put my feet on the gravel to fix it. Ain't enough so you can get anything from the state. And little ditch wash on Cemetery Road, low on bottom of Mill Hill. We got them all, they're all fixed now. Every hall, the grimmens, all running with it, it took it down and had the, couldn't get no lights on the back of the big truck. There's wire filled it up inside the towers on the back of the bodies. That's all, everything that's going over tomorrow will be inspected, so everything else is all set to go right now. Back over and ready for cattle, they'll come down and do their fat oil chain. They've got to, they've got to take oil samples and test everything at first time.
So while we're on roads, I've had several people from in town, and I've also seen for myself where the yield sign is from the lower road. People are yielding, looking, no cars, and they take off. And just as they get right there at the Y, cars are coming and they're slamming on brakes. Is there any way to move that yield sign further out so that they yield further out and then they can look up and see that there's definitely no cars?
Move the sign towards Gaiming Fortmore?
Yeah.
Up where the neighbors are?
I mean, I don't know what distance it needs to be. I mean, there is a property line there.
I, I don't know. I know when they come through and did the sign package on the upper road. Did they put the hole in there?
I mean, like I said, people have come to me and questioned where it is. I've been sitting out there at the neighbors and I've watched cars. They slow right down to a yield, they look, they take off, and they get right there and slam it on brakes because a car comes.
I think people moving too fast in town again, I talked to the sheriff, I don't know what they're doing on that end. They're, they're moving down that up road too fast, like, yeah.
I have seen, I have seen them in town, so...
So I don't know if that's something we want to consider. I don't know what the procedure is for that.
It was state highway that did the sign package, right?
Well, I can talk...
I mean, I don't even, I don't want to say put even a stop sign, leave it a yield sign, but it's just so far back. If you yield that far back and you're just barely crawling...
If you yield not far back, you can't see it, but...
No, you can't. And it's a danger.
No, no, no.
Yeah, I, I yield back there and then I pull way up and still look. But if you yield back there and see nobody and go, it's not safe.
Is that a lot? Did you have to yield at the sign, or is it just, the yield was, you know, slowed down at least ten miles an hour and perceive it's safe?
I think that's what it is. I don't, I don't think there's any regulation.
If there's a yield sign, I see it, now I'm going to creep up until I, sure, it's safe, and then I'm going to go.
Exactly right.
Well, that's common sense to do it that way.
But people lately don't have...
Common sense isn't so common.
And it also, it also just notifies you that if there are two cars coming, you have to be the one to stop.
Exactly, I don't think there's a set...
No, no set distance.
There's a dangerous situation here, yield, so, okay, oh, I can't see.
Well, there may be a set distance.
I don't think so, because you come down, you come out of Grafton to come this way right here, that yield sign's way back from the bridge. You have to come up and set this side of that sign to let cross the bridge, see if somebody's coming.
But they don't yield there either.
Yeah, they don't yield there either.
No, no, they don't.
You perceive when you're sure it's safe.
You perceive with caution, I understand that. But if you yield and you look and you don't see cars coming and you hit your gas to accelerate and you get to right there where the triangle is and there's cars coming down, it's not safe. And they're like, well, we, I yielded, I yielded, but, so...
Why don't, Tom, why don't you get with, talk with, if that is me, Mike Griffin? Call after him, or call... And if they, if they don't have a problem with it, moving it, we'll talk to the home one and see if we moved up. Where that telephone box picks up out of there.
And if where that telephone box is, it won't be in their, their view? And I think that telephone box might even be the property line. And I'm sure the neighbors on the other side are okay with you putting the yield sign there.
You know, Lonzer brought that up now, Lonzer. I think the town has got to come up with a naughtening that all the, like the lucky people, telephone, fiber optic optics. We got to put in some kind of a thing where they've got to come to the slut lane before they start burying. The other day, they buried from Dan Smith, that upside the block top, right type of the block top, all the way up to the big bind down inside the road, upper road, they're doing the same thing. And then if you go dig down and hit that fiber optic, that's a fifteen thousand dollar fine if you break it.
And you didn't know they were doing it?
Well, I drove by and caught them doing it. But they don't come tell you nothing and they don't even give you a map. Everything on the upper road, all them underground lines on optics, they're all dead.
And they don't need to be removed and the boxes don't need to be removed and stuff?
Boxes all be ripped right out, so then you know there's no bad lines up through there.
Why don't we send a letter to VTEL and Comcast?
Any utility company in the, in the town?
Right, yeah. And say that they, that they have to meet with the road commissioner prior to...
And they shouldn't, see, the first time they went through the, they provided the town with a map where they were buried. Now they just bury them everywhere and they're digging along again, you already know they're there.
So why don't we do that? We want, I'll make a motion that we send a letter to any of the utilities in town, VTEL, Comcast, and Mount Pili.
Is there anyone else?
Any others?
We're going to do it one day.
Uh, that they have to...
And anyone else who comes into town?
Or contractors, or contractors for them.
And I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
What happens to the call before you dig though?
I still want.
Dig safe.
I still want.
But don't they call before they...
They did call, dig safe.
They don't call us.
They don't call us.
They don't call us, but...
They don't.
They should call and have it marked.
Didn't, you were digging and you called dig safe and they marked the wrong area?
Yeah. No, them guys doing that, they don't have to, they don't, they have dig safe come and they mark it for.
Yeah.
But if I didn't, if I went driving by and I went down there to fix the edge of the road or something like that, I don't know that wire is there, that they don't send you no maps or nothing. We still have to call dig safe.
Yeah, shouldn't you call?
I do call.
You have to, well...
I do.
But if he hits the wire, it's still a very large fine. And last time he pulled up wires, they were, luckily, they were all disconnected wires, but they...
But they say mark it here.
They did mark it.
They did mark it, they marked it the wrong spot.
Then that's not on spot.
No, you're exactly right. If I hit the wire and it's marked wrong, it all goes back onto there. But down there, there's no record of any wire, there's no, there's no post, there's no nothing that that wire is even in the ground.
And that's why you call before you dig.
All right, anything else?
In all the lines in the woods, they'll be coming out showing it because of the drive around.
One question, is Denise made a motion about road bids? Yeah, road bids. Hearing from Mount Pili before you, when you put out the road bids, was there a second on that?
Yes, I seconded it and we'll go to it. In last week, last month, you was asking about the wires in the woods, they would have... a guy riding around town last week, had a sign on the door that said contracted to retail, so I saw, see what he was doing. He's measuring to pull up the new lines so they can date the old lines out. So it's in the works, I don't know when it's gonna happen.
There, there is supposed to be a meeting in town August seventh, which I posted out on the board for the Act two fifty with Green Mountain Power. And they're going to be here at nine thirty in the morning and they're gonna go looking out at all the butters and everything, all the lines, and then they will be coming back to the town office for a brief meeting.
Outside of what? And that's a meeting that's open to the public or whoever's properties?
Yes.
Do you have, where they've already changed it?
No, that's to change.
That's, that's for, this part of the road, yeah, because we received letters for that.
From Corflet to Cambridge Water.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else, roads? Nope, move on, that's good. I think you're up next, you're from Agency Natural Resources?
I am.
All right.
Yeah. My name's Aaron Hurst, I'm a forester with Anarch. And um I am here to get permission to um upgrade the uh Bemis Pond Road and the end of Walker Road to the state property and um see if we could put in uh public parking areas to facilitate access to the state property. Um, the town highway map that submitted last year says that the highways, that the town right of way end before they get to the state property. I don't know if that's true or not, I could use some clarification.
Certainly on the, on the pond road there it does. The pent road that's there ends at about where the, the last house is, there's just before that.
Okay. That's where the town railway ends, and then it goes on to your land, right? And we have a, a right of way there up to the state property. Um, and that leads me to my second question, which is that road is in terrible shape. Um, it's been eroding and, and all of a sudden it's going right down into the, the Bemis Pond, I'm sorry, I'll stand up. Um, so we'd like to bring an excavator out and fix that road at the same time, if that's all right.
But I think the road, the pent road which the town has is already fixed up there so that you can drive right up onto it there.
Yeah, okay, if it ends right at the last house, um...
Right before the last.
Right before the last house, then that, then we wouldn't have to do any work on the town road. It's just from there up to the state property that we'd like to ditch and put the road back together again. Um, perhaps create a public parking area there, but I guess that's private business between uh the state and you. Um, but as far as Walker Road is concerned, we'd like to, I think that the town highway ends at the first camp on the left at the top of the hill.
It stops uh, uh just, just above Y-Lo and Stevens.
Okay.
We go up to, when they, when they level off...
Yeah.
Start going across, and then once you get across to the road, it goes down through the woods to the right...
Yeah.
Stops right there.
Okay.
And then right to it, start at four, right?
Okay, is it class four all the way up to Grafton line there?
I think it's class four all the way out through to the old yellow house. I'm not sure what the Grafton line is like, you know. I think the Grafton line is past the yellow house and that.
Okay. Um, well, from, from the top of the hill, we're just gonna upgrade about, I think it's six hundred feet down past Sheehan's camp...
Yeah.
Just over the top of the hill, and then, and we're gonna tuck in right there, build a little parking area. And then we're gonna fix all those roads out on the Sheehan land too. Um, they're all in real rough shape. But that's where the public parking area would go.
So you're gonna go, once you get up to the end, you're gonna go to the left?
Yeah, yeah. Um, and then there's just a question about signage and what, what you guys wanna see. We usually, on our public parking areas, we usually put a kiosk and um a sign that says the name, um, and just some basic information.
Yeah, well, it'd be uh um trash, reception poles and stuff up there, or nothing like that?
No, no.
So it's what you take in, you take out?
Yeah, this is real basic. Um, there are some access areas that receive a lot of public use, and in those uh we do provide some of those, some of the facilities. But that would be really rare, very rare. It would be, it would have to be tens of, tens of people.
What happens if you do put a parking area in there and we find that it is being heavily littered? What?
I, I go around and pick them up.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we do that in-house.
Okay.
Yeah.
Have you talked to the uh landowners up on Walker Road there, the people that live up there about that? Have, have they expressed anything to you, any concerns or anything about that?
Uh, no, we haven't reached out yet. Yeah. I can if, if you want us to, but I figured that it's, it's on a town road, so.
I mean, it might be good to just reach out to them and get their, let them know what's going on.
Yeah.
Is that reasonable?
Yes. I don't know if I wanna make a motion on what he's requesting tonight, or wait for him to talk to the landowners up there first. I'm sort of on the fence for please, so...
I, I mean, I don't...
Well, I know a couple landowners up there, I think it's a great thing to run that road.
Yeah, it's really pining into the whole Pinnacle View hiking trail system and the Grafton ponds. I mean, it's, it's a recreation hub, it's gonna be, um, it's, it's starting to be now and it's, it's gaining popularity all the time.
You guys are putting on um, uh, Turner Hill too, I know about that. And they're gonna go in on Turner Hill and go in for a wage though.
Yeah.
There's a parking area up there already.
There is, yeah. That one's, that one's kind of useless because it's got a beaver pond all the way around it now. So, yes, you can park there, but you can't go anywhere unless you have a boat.
So, I, I think the, the sense of the board here is, is we'll probably give you the permission to do it, um, but I would like to have the, the neighbors up there know about it, uh, and, and they can, you know, express to us if they have a concern or, or whatever. And maybe we can just take this up next meeting? Is that reasonable?
Yeah, I can send, I can send letters out certified mail if you want, and um, and give them a deadline to respond to either you or to, to me.
Is waiting a whole month too late to do what you want to do?
Um, no, because uh the work that we're gonna be doing on, on the Turner Hill property will take several weeks in itself, and I don't expect to have an excavator there until, at the earliest, late August.
So why don't you do that, the, the next meeting, and just put in there that the next, if anybody has a concern, they can bring it to us at the next select board meeting. Um, would be the third, Thursday of August. Um, and if they have any issues, they can bring it to us and, and speak to it here.
August sixteenth.
You want me to, to hit all the landowners up Walker Road?
It wouldn't hurt, I suppose.
All the way down to Bemis Pond? But I don't know how much that is, but...
I, I don't either, but it's, I mean, it's not a huge number, I don't know.
Um, if you come in Monday, we can look it up on the tax map and figure it out.
Okay, I can do that.
It's something like that. But I, I would at least like them to know about it and, and so that they can't say that, you know.
Eight, eight and nine hours.
So if they have any questions or concerns, they can come to us on the sixteenth, otherwise it would be, we'll vote yes.
We'll vote, well, we'll vote one way or the other, we're not saying, but it's kind of the sense that it probably would say yes to you, but I'd like them to just have their...
Uh, you want me to be here on the sixteenth?
Wouldn't hurt if you were. So you can at least explain it to them if anybody is...
If anyone does show up, if they have questions?
Do you have like a, a drawing of what the, or how they can...
It's gotta be... Yeah, it's, it's three cars, you know, two loads of gravel and some rocks to block off the existing skid roof. Yeah, that, that's real tiny.
So, would it be similar to the little parking pull-up that's right up here next to the farm for the pinnacle? Do you know?
I guess I'm not familiar with that one.
That's about two or three cars.
Yeah.
As you're headed north, it's, it's on the left-hand side, just past the farm.
There's a little kiosk there.
There's a little kiosk there, you know, maybe three, maybe four cars.
That sounds very similar.
Yeah, okay.
So that being said, can we also, can I, right by that last house on Bemis Pond Road, can I expand a little area within the town right of way to create a little parking area there?
I think the town right of way is there. Uh, once it, it goes just about to the, where it opens up where they split there, that's where the, the town right of way ends at that point, I believe. There used to be a gate across there, and if you, I don't know if there's any remnants of it still there, but I think that was where the, where the pent road ended at that point. Maybe a post or something's still there from the gate.
So you're, so it sounds like that's not gonna be an option to create a public access on that side?
I think, I think if you go into that, um, we can talk about, but I don't know if it's gonna be necessarily room there, but uh within the right of way. I mean, we can look at it.
Okay, um, is there a good way to get ahold of you?
No.
Yeah, I, if, are you gonna wait till the end of the meeting here? I can, I can talk to you after.
Um, I can't, how long is your meeting?
It shouldn't take much longer than half.
Okay, I can wait, yep.
All right, we'll move on to warrants and mail.
There is, there is a warrant, is it?
Can you get through to me?
No.
I think we should have the drag come down, talk to us, see if they're really talking about it. Like you said, the other city, they had nothing on that first grade, no flag.
I want you to get a...
What?
And can she, for James Oil for the Camber, um, signing it?
You are in the warrants.
In the warrant, we need, yeah, that's the cow.
This?
Yeah. Yeah, we need to sign it, so it doesn't get that.
First person. Can you have two more?
We are very done.
Okay.
The first one. So I will make a motion that we sign the agreement uh with uh James Oil Company. And this is for this building?
That garage.
That garage. Is there a second?
A second, yes.
All in favor?
You can do this now, too, though.
Sure.
So, um, I'll make a motion, we need to reappoint a forest fire warden and...
I think it's approved, I think the state appoints it, but...
Yeah, the state.
The...
You approve or reject it? Oh, reappointment. Okay, so I'm gonna approve the reappointment of David Bemis for the state forest fire warden. All in favor? Are you gonna...
I will abstain.
Same. Can you second it?
Yep.
All in favor, say aye. And then we can just fill out the portion.
All right, any more, you want anything? Um, we may have a brief executive session, but uh we can probably do that at the very end, um, so not to hold everybody up here. So select board comments.
Just like to thank the road crew for getting everything taken care of from that last storm with all the washouts.
Yep, we're doing. I'm pretty sure David's going to just come back and...
Select board comments? Uh, public comments on items on the agenda. Sam?
Nope. Um, could I just make a quick, uh, no, I'd like to thank everybody that attended the meeting house on Saturday. Um, we greatly appreciate everybody's attendance and generosity. Thank you.
I've got to thank the road crew for the, uh, work done in the bottom of the West Cemetery access road, the drainage work that was done there. And then also early June, they cleared all the wires away from the uh, the uh, the, what would be the, the east wall on the, on the old cemetery. Well, thank you, guys.
Yeah, we'll talk to you on, from stuff up there.
Yep.
When's the next cemetery meeting, so?
Uh, first Wednesday in September, at six o'clock at the town office.
Yes, no, yes.
Um, just a quick question. The select board meeting in which Tom was not here, uh, I was watching Fact TV and there was a mention of two thousand dollars was spent to repair the new loader backhoe. It was in the warrants. Nobody knows. Nobody asked, nobody knows.
To repair the loader bucket? To repair the loader bucket.
The new one. You weren't here. Matt was here to represent the roads. And there was a, something on the warrant, $2,000 to repair the new loader backhoe. I was just wondering what that repair was.
Don't know. There's nobody been there to repair.
Did you buy chains for it?
This was a repair, this.
Well, you might have.
Well, instead of chains for it, shit, that was a lot of fall.
I think that's all it's, well, I'm just thinking, I might have mentioned that it's over its repair budget, but it's repair and maintenance and usually when you buy chains for something, it's going to be under that.
But it's maintenance.
So, whatever the $2,298 is in the backhoe thing on the budget is probably the chains, I guess.
The only thing we bought for.
Okay.
So, technically, it's not a repair.
No, I know, because that is chains for specific things.
It's the only thing we bought for.
All we said was, was a repair, $2,000 repair.
He made a mistake in this term.
Yeah, I mean, it would be noted specifically in the warrants.
Bought chains for it from Andrea. The only thing I know of is not what, what. Because then in that, two weeks ago, they were going to come down and do it, they were taking oil sand posts.
I'll get it right out.
And.
From the backhoe?
From the backhoe.
To see if, to see if it's wearing and once it's doing.
And they're going to come down and check the boom on the backhoe. I don't think it's just like, there's something in there there.
All right.
When they've done the boom, that's no work.
Anything else, Dennis?
Should be all one team.
Anything else, Dylan?
Yes, I'd like to ask the cemetery group, you had a meeting on the 6th of June. Where are the minutes? They're not in the cemetery book as of Monday.
Okay, yeah, that's correct. They'll be in soon.
Okay. I'll be back Monday.
All right. Any further business? Yeah, we are. But any further business? No, nothing? All right, I will make a motion that we go into executive session where we ensure public knowledge will put the town of Athens at a disadvantage.
Can you say it for a legal matter?
For a legal matter. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Can you tell people legal matter, when it's?
It's a legal matter.